Please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Willis is excused. Commissioner Denson.
Can I speak up, can't hear you.
Commissioner Denson.
President.
Commissioner Culpepper.
President.
Commissioner Huntington.
President.
Commissioner Griffiths.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
President.
Commissioner Mia.
Present.
You do have a quorum to conduct business this evening.
Thank you. Have approval of the agenda please. To the chair?
Yes.
I so move that the agenda be approved as written.
Second?
Approved by Commissioner Culpepper, seconded by Commissioner Mia. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Agenda is approved as stated. Any announcements, communications?
Not at this time.
Okay. First on the agenda, we have a public hearing, PZR 19-0001.
Through the chair, at the request of the petitioner, on behalf of Forgotten Harvest, they have withdrawn their application. This was already previously advertised, so that's why it's on the agenda still, but they will not be moving forward.
Okay, so PZR 19-0001 will be withdrawn. Next on the agenda is PSLU 19-0002.
Through the chair, PSLU 19-0002 is a zoning ordinance text amendment to amend Title V zoning and planning, Chapter 45 zoning code of the city of Southfield, by amending Article IV general requirements to add a new section 5.22-3-1 RUDD residential unit development districts, and to amend Article V single-family residential, section 5.62-a to add small event venues as a special land use, and other amendments as needed. These text amendments specifically address adding a new overlay district for residential development of various vacant school district properties in the city, including amending the zoning map to identify residential unit development eligible districts, areas, and allowing for the use of residential structures and properties as small event venues subject to special conditions and other revisions as may become necessary for the city of Southfield. The first part of this is similar to our overlay development district, which has worked well in the city for non-residential areas. We currently have six vacant school sites throughout the city, and we have developed regulations to allow for the adaptive reuse of these school sites, should the right development come into play, to provide for repurposing as multiple family and additional single-family or attached single-family, to provide a variety of housing options, and to discourage blight and charter schools. There are six potential eligible sites, so we're asking for the recommendation on the regulations that allow and that will regulate a residential unit development district, but we're only creating the eligibility in six potential areas in the city. Each specific site would have to come through the RUDD process, should the appropriate development be identified. They include the former John Grace School, the former Eisenhower School, the former Leonard School, the former Northbrook School, the former McKinley School, and the former Brace Letterly Schools. These are examples of existing conditions and aerials of McKinley and John Grace, just to show the potential for adaptive reuse of these buildings. And there's a number of regulations that we're proposing, a schedule of regulations. Eligibility requirements include they have to provide a recognizable benefit to the city, there's a minimum of 3.75 acres of contiguous land, we're going to look at the use of public services, compatibility with the future land use plan, economic impact, the amount of usable open spaces provided, whether or not there's unified control of ownership, and then any legal documentation that may be required. Design standards, first of all, you have to be in an eligible RUDD overlay district. Permitted uses include any residential land use, including multiple family, so single-family could be developed, attached residential could be developed, or multiple family, and any accessory buildings, including but not limited to rental offices, community buildings, non-commercial golf courses, public libraries, parks, and nature preserves. The density will be based on the setbacks that are established, the future land use plan, and other ordinance standards. Where we do not modify the underlying district, then the underlying zoning requirements will stay in place. This is to provide regulatory flexibility from the strict letter of the law under strict zoning district, would not allow for a mix of uses, of residential uses. We have a minimum 25 percent open space that would be made part of the project. Frontage and access, promotion of natural, preservation of natural features, underground utilities, and any other additional considerations on a site-by-site basis that the planning commission and the city feels is necessary, including but not limited to stormwater management, green infrastructure, and noise reduction. Procedures would be similar to an amendment, a zoning amendment, within the zoning ordinance with the specific designation of our RUDD. A master development agreement and plan would be established at that time, and the planning commission would make a recommendation to city council, the city council would have the final approval, and this also could be developed over a series of phases. So they might come and get the RUDD in place with a phase one, and then they would come back for future phases on a site, site plan basis. So that, in summary, the development standards and requirements with respect to review and approval include conformance with the RUDD concept, compatibility with adjacent uses, the protection of the natural environment, compatibility with the future land use plan, and compliance with applicable regulations. Phasing, area height, bulk, and placement requirements is established through the process, and general development standards. Now, when we adopted the future land use plan and sustainable Southfield, we did get feedback from the school district when they were looking long-term on what they could do with their vacant school sites, and we just discuss as an option, multiple family and adaptive reuse. So again, this does not force the school district into doing anything different. Education and the single-family are still permitted, it's just if they identify the right developer or the right development, it gives them the eligibility to apply for this district. And with that, you can open up the public hearing, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions. But before we get to that, I just realized this was a two-parter. The second amendment that's being proposed is to allow for small event venues as special land uses within the single-family district when they meet specific guidelines. Site has to be at least an acre. We chose this site located at 23410 West 12 Mile as a case study. This was a former farmhouse and barn. The farmhouse was condemned, had to be demolished. The barn cannot sit on the site as a principal use on its own, and we are trying to look for adaptive reuse of the barn and provide for a reasonable alternative for the use of the barn without having the barn torn down, or requiring a single-family house to be built. So this is being used as a case study of how this small event venue may be applied to some of our historic sites, similar to what we did with the bed and breakfast, where we tried to save the McDonald House and provide as an option the bed and breakfast regulations. This is a similar type of approach. The small event venue, the maximum building size would be 3,000 square feet of first-floor area, a minimum one acre of land is required, the maximum building height is 30 feet, must be located on a major thoroughfare. Parking shall be required in accordance with our off-street parking requirements, however, since this is a residential character, and we're trying to preserve the character of the farm, the city engineer can allow for gravel parking lots, the barrier-free parking spaces would be paved, but instead of having a third of the area paved, we can work with the city engineer and have some permeable material put down for parking. We don't see these types of uses being used every day, or on, even possibly even on a year-round basis, they might be limited to certain engagements throughout the year. Outside storage shall be prohibited, the hours of operation will be subject to each special land use conditions, temporary outdoor activities may be permitted, subject to special use conditions, any new building shall be setback a minimum of 30 feet from all property lines, and a six-foot tall residential fence or unpierced masonry wall shall be provided on all sides adjacent to residential districts. And we provided the flexibility of a residential fence, just because by putting up a six- or eight-foot tall masonry wall might actually do more harm in detracting from the residential character than providing the necessary separation and noise barriers. Driveway approach must be acceptable to the city engineer and the road commission. On-site barrier-free spaces and access aisles are to be asphalt, as I stated, and the access aisles have to meet the accessible access route, and all other site requirements will be subject to our current landscaping, stormwater, and pedestrian circulation in the zoning ordinance. So with that, I'll sit down and let you open the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Quill. Okay, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to come to the podium and speak, come on forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners. Who has any statements or comments about the RUDD?
To the chair.
Commissioner Culpepper.
Yes, thank you, sir. As we discussed in our study session, I like this, because what we're doing, to me, is being proactive. We have six schools that's vacant, and we don't want those schools to turn into a blight in the worst than it is. So by being proactive and setting up something that could be used for housing or whatever, I think it's good. And the good thing about it is, if the school decides to do something with that school, they still have the right to do it. So we're not taking that right away from the school, but we just open it up for petitioners or somebody that may want to come in and do something. So, you know, I think this is great, we're being proactive and setting something up to be able to do something, so I like this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Commissioner Denson.
How many sites do the city owns and the school board?
Well, my understanding is, there's, right now, we're starting small with six potential sites. Of the six sites, four are owned by the school district, and I believe two of them are owned by the not-for-profit, the Southfield not-for-profit. So McKinley and John Grace are owned by the not-for-profit, and the other four sites are controlled by the school district. And it's likely, as I stated in the study session, that either McKinley or John Grace will happen first, or possibly both of them. And if these are successful, and we've identified other areas in the city in the future, we could add other eligible sites. But when we started and adopted the overlay development district, we started small, and then we added additional eligible areas as we had a couple successful developments take place.
And who is the developer for the nonprofit?
They haven't submitted anything yet, because they can't even start the process without this eligibility. And as each project comes to fruition, an application will be submitted, and they'll go through the same amendment process as you do for a traditional ODD. So each school site may have different developers. I just know that it's the intent of the not-for-profit to start with either McKinley or John Grace. The school district has no plans for redeveloping their four parcels at this time, but they did, the previous supervisor had reached out to me during the master plan process about the possibility and the eligibility of creating these multiple-family residential district. It's the school's district's prerogative if they want to take advantage of this. This just allows the eligibility and eliminates one step in the process, should they find the right developer, or should they want to develop this on their own.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mia.
He just took my remark. I was just going to ask about how receptive for viewing public, I was just going to ask him how receptive were the school board in regards to this, but he already answered.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Griffiths.
Got a lot of comments on this, these are really interesting items to me. The small event venue, I think makes a lot of sense, it's just necessary to have flexibility to preserve some of these unique properties and make financial sense of them, if it is at all possible in the future. The RUDD is a really interesting, necessary idea to redevelop, to have flexibility and creativity. Always a fan of adaptive reuse of a building, if at all possible, and what's really nice, and these two site plans are perfect examples, if you just take the building on the left, it's a really cool-looking historic building, or my left, the McKinley Building, the historic-looking school, perfect candidate for adaptive reuse, and almost over half your site could be set up as new construction, and that mix allows huge flexibility of unit type, you can do multifamily dwellings at all different price points, so you can really bring together many different people from the city and provide really the housing type that there's not a lot of, this quote-unquote "missing middle" housing types, and it just provides a huge amount of flexibility for moving into the future, and every other city around us is already doing this. So this is, it's necessary, exciting, it provides a lot of flexibility. I drive by McKinley every morning on my way to the office and look at that building and figure out what I, try to think about what I could do with it, and I'm glad that there is going to be some potential to redevelop that whole site, I think it's going to be really interesting. And the other thing is, it just, the flexibility is the key, like, it always, it makes the projects come into planning commission for review, and you can really ask for nicer developments and give and take a little bit, preserve some open space, maybe put the buildings closer together and would be typical, and still the overall density makes sense and provides a transition between the neighborhoods and the different housing types that are there. I would be curious what, how much money is being spent or wasted to just preserve a building that's not in use, and you're talking 10, 20-acre sites, of really how much money that does cost to sit and wait without a plan? I don't think any of us can answer that right now, but, so, love the adaptive reuse development districts, and I think they've proven very successful already with the commercial ones.
Yeah, through the chair, if I could respond to a couple comments.
Okay.
I mean, if you look at either one McKinley or John Grace, they're both just over four acres. If you look at how many actual single-family houses could be built under their current zoning, it's minimal, and the cost to tear the buildings down and develop the new infrastructure, new building, the price point, you couldn't make it work economically. Then there's our long-term goal of sustainability, and trying to reduce tearing historic buildings down in particular and putting them in landfills. And I think that each of these school sites will be a hybrid. I think part of the buildings will be preserved for multiple-family or higher density, and then there'll be new construction as well. And then to Mr. Griffiths' point, we have to provide a variety of housing options as our demographics change and they get older. And I know that one of the two school sites is geared towards senior housing, because there's actually a waiting list at McDonald Towers for senior housing. The other one is scheduled for market rate, and I think if we're going to continue to attract young families, empty nesters, kids out of college, we got to provide different housing options that people want to live in. Not everybody wants the mortgage and the large yard to take care of nowadays, and if you head west or northwest, there's a huge construction boom for residential, and we're being passed over. And so if we want to continue to be competitive as a city and try to stay in front of the changing demographics, we have to be flexible and at least provide for the potential of redevelopment. Can't force anybody to do this, but if the regulations aren't in place, we'll never have anybody coming to us to see if this can work.
Thank you. Commissioner Mia.
Yes, part two of the project, as far as 12 Mile, do you see where there would be any adverse reaction or problems with Chana Clear and the Woodland Wild Brook area as far as the barn?
Well, we never know, but part of the reason we're doing this as a special land use is it allows for public input. And another reason that we say that these properties have to be on a major thoroughfare is so they don't get developed in the interior of a residential subdivision, so the character can be preserved. And I think with the special land use regulations, we can limit hours of operation, intensity of use. It doesn't benefit anybody, whether you live in a single-family home or a multiple-family, to have a vacant dilapidated building sitting next to you. And we are trying to preserve our heritage in an adaptive way, and I think I mentioned to you, I attended my first barn wedding up in Marquette, and, you know, most of the days of the week, it looks like a farm and operates and acts like a farm, but on weekends, they have these special events, and it's a unique experience, and it's a way to help preserve our heritage, because certainly farming, especially in the urban cities, have gone through a lot of changes, and this is, again, one adaptive way. Just down the street, we had a historic farmhouse and barn torn down for conventional four-unit development, and we're losing these significant sites, so we want to try to provide innovative ways that's also respectful of the neighboring residential areas, and try to find a compromise.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Culpepper.
Thank you, to the chair. Terry, again, the small event, I think it's a good idea, as we talked before, because to me, it's something unique, and we want to get away from trying to tear down historical buildings, just like you said, we did with McDonald House, turned into a B and B, which is great. And I heard you say it, and also Commissioner Griffin had gone to a wedding up north, and they used the barn as a wedding thing. So I think it's something different, just like we got the new event, the NOR, we'll be giving stuff over there, that's a little high-class, but as Commissioner Mia said about the residence, this is open, so we get a chance to let them voice their opinion of what they want to say. But this is something I think is a selling point, is unique, is different, and the only, not drawback, the issue would be, to me, would be the parking, bringing the cars in and parking it on the, I guess, grass rather than gravel, and as you said, the building commission give us something on that. But this would be great, I really think this would be a selling point, that you have different affairs or something in a barn, it gives you that urban look, so I like that also.
And if I could add, we use that as a case study. That barn would be limited to a maximum occupancy of 49 people, so if you had a typical two or three persons per car, you're talking 20 cars, you're talking hours of, hours can be limited to, this is not 225-person wedding venue, this is maximum of 49, based on building occupancy, number of restrooms, and so forth, and that's a number given to us by the building official.
Good. Commissioner Griffiths.
Just one more little thing on the adaptive reuse and all the different funding sources that are going to have to meld together. I heard the word nonprofit be mentioned, and it definitely can't be a nonprofit-only or a for-profit-only, or usually is not, a nonprofit-only scenario, it's another perfect application to have this group that has a strength in for-profit, and they can peacefully coexist on the same site, and they might need to coexist on the same site, to get your asbestos removal credits and all the creative funding sources that are out there. There's just a lot of, it's going to cost more than it's going to be worth, or chances are it's going to cost more than it's going to be worth, but with this teamwork and teaming up with nonprofits and for-profits, it really is, it's going to bring in all the different types that have to happen to make the project happen.
Thank you. Commissioner Culpepper.
To the chair. Terry, this is directed to you, I guess. Understand, with the two nonprofit schools, it wouldn't be an issue if they got a petition to come in and want to do something with the property. My question to you is that, we know that at this point in time, the school has decided not to engage in this and do anything, but my question is, since they still have ownership of it, what happens if a petitioner comes in and wanted, to your office, and want to do something with those four schools that's not nonprofit? Do they then have to go to the school board?
Of course.
Because property's theirs.
The school district owns the property, and they have control, they don't have to give consent for a developer, unless they're in partnership or they want to sell the property. I know recently, they had these parcels on the open market for sale.
Couldn't sell them.
And then they've pulled back.
Right.
And I know, for example, a large grocery store was interested in one of the school sites. I don't think that is an adaptive reuse of the school, and I think it would cause more consternation on the adjacent residents than adaptive reuse of existing building. So this does not force the school district into anything, other than it gives them another option. As landowners, they have the right to decide to take advantage of this or not. It doesn't take away from their underlying use as a school, or for other residential, single-family residential. As I stated, it just gives them the eligibility, should they find the right developer, or they want to develop on their own, to move forward. And it's not... And it, it's not, it's not limited to either not-for-profit or, or, or for-profit. I'm just saying that I, I'm aware that the Southfield not-for-profit housing board is interested in possibly moving forward with one or both of those sites as identified by McKinley and John Grace.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just wanna say, I wanna applaud the planning department for just thinking outside the box. The whole purpose of the R U D D is to encourage imagination. Something like this, a good architect and, and a building team can really let their imagination run wild. So many possibilities as far as design. And it's also a very efficient use of land. So you'll be talking about beautifying the area and providing, you know, greater flexibility into the neighborhood. So, you know, looking forward to it, hope this passes and, and we can move forward with it. Okay? Can I have a motion, please? Well, actually, I guess I need to hear the planner's recommendation.
Well, it's pretty short and sweet. We recommend favorable consideration of the draft dated three twenty-seven nineteen for filing reasons. The proposed text amendment will add a new section, R U D D residential unit development districts, and amend Article Five, Single Family Residential, to add small event venues as a special land use and other amendments as needed. And number two, these text amendments specifically address adding a new overlay district for development of various school district properties in the city, and allowing for use of residential structures and properties as small event venues, subject to specific conditions and other revisions as may be necessary. And I just want to point out that this is the overlay district eligible areas. They still have to go through the process on a case-by-case basis.
All right, okay. Okay. Motion, please. Commissioner Griffiths?
I'd like to make a motion for favorable recommendation of PSLU nineteen dash zero-zero-zero-two.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Griffiths, seconded by Commissioner Mia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay. PSLU nineteen dash zero-zero-one passes. Favorable as stated. Okay? Two, zero-zero-two. Sorry about that. Okay, two. Next on the agenda, we have the minutes.
Well, we actually have site plan.
Site plan.
Through the chair, PSP nineteen dash zero-zero-zero-two is a site plan review request of Mr. Nick Freund on behalf of the owner, Trucklight Company LLC, for the construction of a forty thousand square foot headquarters and tech center on property located at two-one-seven-zero-zero Civic Center Drive. The site is approximately five acres. It's located on northeast corner of Civic Center Drive and northbound Northwestern Highway. This is the current existing aerial. And the site is zoned regional center. These are existing site photos. And then, this is the conceptual plan, which I'm going to turn over to the team here to actually go through their specific proposal. And then, we would be happy to answer any questions as well as the team here that the planning commission may have. And this is, again, site plan review recommendation tonight.
Okay, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir. And thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you. My name is Nicholas Freund. I represent Freund and Associates, located at three oh seven West Sixth Street in Royal Oak, Michigan. Excuse me. As Terry rec, as Terry mentioned, you know, we're here on behalf of Trucklight to push forward their new headquarters project in your, in your city center. We prepared a brief PowerPoint presentation.
Which is at, at the end of your site plan?
Okay, great.
So if you wouldn't mind going through the site plan specifics, and then you can give the history of what Trucklight is?
Fabulous, I will. So, as Terry mentioned, this is the building facade that is, that we have been working through with senior leadership to, to approve. Here are a couple of viewpoints. One thing I'd like to point out with this shot here specifically, one thing you did not see at our first study session, was the pedestrian corner, pedestrian hardscapes interlocking with your community walking paths. At the, at the first iteration of this, we were working through what really we thought was right for not only Trucklight but for Southfield, and we grew upon the drawing that we received from Allen Design, and we included a little branding opportunity here for Trucklight to meet the needs of the city as well as, as Trucklight. Here's the building elevation, largely the same elevation you saw the first time we met. We're incorporating exterior elements in brick, glass, and metal panel. Here's the south and north elevation. Here it is in planned view. We've, we've talked with senior leadership several times since we've met with you folks a month ago, and we've made no changes to the footprint. There has been some iterations that changed the interior walls, but nothing on the exterior walls. One thing I will actually point out in addition, one change that we are considering at this point is the drive lane to the, to the north of that, of the, of the shot there. Currently, as you see it, we're planning to have a truck route for demonstration purposes only, loop and work their way around the south side of, excuse me, the north side of the building and do a full turnaround. It, it's becoming apparent that that's no longer needed. And we hope that Southfield views that as a benefit, because we will be reducing the hardscape on the north side of the building. So as opposed to that full turnaround for both sides of the demonstration lane, you're gonna have just that, the one drive lane, which would be on the east side of that, of the building.
Smart.
Here's the-
This is a detailed landscaping.
Yep, this is the detailed landscaping plan, thanks to Noah and Fraus. I believe we are compliant with-
Yeah, and I'm, I'm just gonna ask that prior to city council, if they can add some color to that?
Sure.
And then we'll replace the conceptual landscape plan?
Thank you, we will, yeah. Thanks for the feedback. Okay, well then, this is my opportunity to tell you folks a little bit about Trucklight. The first slide here is a lot of the information I think you're familiar with. Terry introduced the project as forty thousand square feet with a, with a ma, primary use of, of Trucklight's headquarters. Technology Center, Tech Center, headquarters is the primary use, which is gonna be Class A office, with some training component and some nice Class A office amenities to go with that. We're also, as I mentioned earlier, incorporating a demonstration space that's gonna be on the north side of the building. And that, I think that requires a little bit more description. So Trucklight, as I'll mention later in the slide deck, you know, is a tier-one auto supplier. So they're gonna be bringing in trucks, commercial vehicles, and trailers into that demonstration area to show their clients and their OEM clients, you know, a lot of their products that will be on their vehicles. So they really need a space not to, not for vehicle maintenance, not to run vehicles or to park vehicles, but to demonstrate their products. So I, I have a feeling that, as we get further into the design development of that space, it's gonna be pretty unique. They're gonna wanna simulate darkness and dusk and dawn, so that the, the lighting features on these vehicles are, are showcased. I know the previous discussion, you questioned how often there would be truck traffic, and we've gone back to leadership a few times, and it's, it's pretty small, in terms of one to two trailers a month. You know, it would be specific to, you know, whatever client they have that week or that month, and the, the idea is not to store any vehicles, certainly outside or inside, but that they would come in, show their products, and it would move on. Trailers would be moved in and out during normal business hours. For headcount, Trucklight is moving from the Buffalo area of New York, and they're really gonna start small, but their initial plan is to move, you know, the twelve to twenty people immediately into the facility in, you know, the first or second quarter of next year, and with, with a real goal of having ninety-five to a hundred people working in the facility. The, the building itself is, is test fit for one-twenty-five, for future growth. Hours operations are eight to five. They're, they are a national or an international company, I should say, but we challenge them on wondering if they would be having some extended hours for, for the, to service those additional time zones, and they don't. They, they really, as they currently operate, they don't have a special need to be working outside of a normal nine-to-five situation, outside of some extenuating circumstance that they were, that they felt was negligible. So here's a, a bullet-pointed company overview. I think, I won't probably read through every bullet point as an outsider to the brand, but there is a few that resonate with me. Established in nineteen fi, nineteen fifty-five, and their annual revenues are five hundred million. They do have three thousand employees across the globe, and they are in a million square feet of manufacturing space in ten different plants, which I'll show in a, in a slide a little later in this presentation. The ownership is really comprised of three major groups, three large equity groups, Coke Industries, BDT Capital, and Penske, Penske Corp. I, I mentioned the close affiliation to Penske. Obviously, Roger Penske has his facility up in Bloomfield, so there's a proximity that has been helpful. They've been a big part of helping us with not only design development, but, but the process at large. This slide really showcases their products. Again, as an outsider, I, I'm probably not the first, best person to speak to some of the technology, but they really are a technology company. I mentioned before, their, their core focus and their core business is lighting components for commercial vehicles. They also provide ancillary equipment around that, including wire harnesses, safety equipment, and telematics, which is vehicle tracking Here's a slide that shows major customers. Again, most predominantly automotive, with OEMs listed on, throughout this page. Here's an additional slide for major customers that are serviced by Trucklight. Here's a slide I mentioned about the global facilities. They are truly international. Far-reaching is Shanghai and San Paulo. And these, you know, being a manufacturer, they work with the, with, with large distributors, and, and they're listed here. Napa, Traditional WD, and OES dealers.
So Nick, next time we see this, we're gonna have Southfield, Michigan, listed on their global facilities.
You got it, absolutely right.
That's a good call, Terry.
Well, you know, thank you, Terry. And one thing that this slide deck doesn't show is the excitement that Trucklight has about coming to Southfield. And specifically, the technology corridor, right? We're excited to be in the city center. We're very excited about the proximity to Lawrence Tech University. It feels good. That's, that is, that is kind of echoed through the halls with, with leadership. They're excited to be here. They think this is the right spot where they want to be. There was other sites considered, but this, this was the, this was the fit. And they, and part of that is to attract young talent, right? They want this facility to be first-class, state-of-the-art, you know, proximate to, you know, the engineering college, to really attract young, vibrant, interesting, young individuals to, to help Trucklight and their technology moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions, sirens? Commissioner Martin?
You talked about, in your slide, you had a, you got exactly what you said. You had some type of mirrors that were using chemicals, and I'm just wondering, would you have a type of different, various chemicals on site, or would you be doing designing that involves making any models that would involve?
You know, to try and speak on behalf of the brand, we will double-check that, but I believe the answer is no. I, I strongly believe that the, the core function of this building is corporate headquarters.
Administrative offices.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. There, we are not, we are not programming or developing any laboratory or any-
Just demonstration project with, for the-
Yes, sir. So we, we might have, you know, some, honestly, cleaning chemicals. That would be part of any kind of corporate building, but, but no, there, at no point are, are we divi, developing anything for R and D, vehicle maintenance, or testing or laboratory.
I was just, in, in one of the slides, that you had the beveling, the chemical beveling for the-
Yes, sir.
-mirrors. That's, and that's, that's what I call chemical beveling.
Yes. No, I, we, I, we'll certainly back, backcheck that with the brand, but highly unlikely to, likely impossible.
Thank you. Commissioner Culpepper?
To the chair, thank you. As I said in the, our study meeting, I like your architect, and I know our engineer, he'll speak to that. It's not a cookie cutter. It's a, it's a different building, and he's back there smiling like before. It, it's something good. You know, you, you're gonna come by this area, you're gonna look at it, and you're gonna take a sucker look because of the way it looks. And you, you said the right thing. Thanks for coming to Southfield. We have the intelligence. You got LTU over there with brilliant students that's gonna come in and use that. I like it. I like the layout. And again, I am, I'm, I'm enthused with how the building's gonna look, because we do have some old buildings in this city, but when we bring something in new that's different, I think it, it helps draw people in. So as Terry said, the next time we see that picture, I hope you do see Southfield up there, because I, I hope it goes through. But you got it. Again, you, we're gonna get people. You know, you, you, you said, at least right now, you got ninety-five to a hundred that you're bringing, and I'm quite sure as business go up, you're gonna be adding more people. And the more people you add to it, the better it is for our tax base here in Southfield. So, thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mia?
Through the chair, I concur with Commissioner Culpepper. Beautiful building. Thank you for adding beautification to the city of Southfield. I like that pedestrian corner. Pedestrian corner is really nice. It's gonna, it's gonna pop in that area. Thank you so much. And yes, we would love to see the city of Southfield on that map, and hopefully you will take some of the city of Southfield's talents as well. We have talented people who live in the city, so hopefully some of them will be hired as well.
I'll pass the word.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Griffiths?
Yeah, I think it's, it's a great-looking building. It's, it's gonna be a nice fit on that corner. I, I think the landscaping plan's looking pretty interesting as well, with the orchard concept and the plaza on the corner, and, but still screening the parking and the headlights and all the requirements that you need to do. It's my, my one criticism is, it is the city center district. I, I hope we don't kick everybody out at five o'clock and everybody has to leave and go somewhere else. I mean, it should be adding to the vibrancy of the, of the area. I'm sure they don't all leave at five anyway, but-
Well, there is a patio, so.
We need to open a bar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Culpepper?
To the chair. Thank you. Terry, this is for you, I guess. You know, a nice piece of artwork would look real nice, right? I mean, I'm just asking. A nice piece of artwork would look real nice right there, coming down that-
Well, one, one of the things we talked about is by providing this urban plaza that may count towards as art, their art requirement.
Oh, okay.
The only thing I think we covered in our, our plans is, conceptually, you show a new sign pretty close to the corner, but there's at least a fifteen-foot setback, and that could easily be placed into the center of your plaza, similar to Macabees.
Yes, sir.
And I know this is just conceptual, but, yeah, I'm very happy with the, the evolution with the landscaping, with the modern design of the building. of the building. I'm glad that, you know, mentioned you're gonna be literally right across the street from Lawrence Tech. As you know, a hundred, ten thousand cars drive by, so it's a prominent site. It's always good to have steel going up with everything else that we're doing, extending the pathways with the Lawrence Tech's building expansion, with their athletic fields going up, and some potential development. And this site has probably been vacant too long.
Yeah.
And we are happy to have you as corporate partners with all the good things that we were doing here. And they, you know, worked in partnership truly with us to develop this site appropriately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
Staying with the corner, I believe we have ten-foot sidewalk, sidewalks along that area? So you've got, you're continuing the ten-foot walkways?
Yes, sir.
So your fifteen-foot setback is not far from it?
Yeah, it's from the property line, though. And I'm just saying that conceptually, that sign is probably too close.
Too close, yeah.
It'll have to meet the specific requirements. We don't approve signs here, as I stated. But the fact that they added this gateway feature, that we were previously in negotiations with the property owner, and that we could, we could partner with them to get it built all at once, is exciting, and...
As everyone else has said, it's very interesting, very nice.
Thank you. If I, may I make a comment?
Sure.
You know, one thing that we, staying on the vein of the signage, sorry, I can't think of the gentleman's name right now, but we have reached out, I think, a couple times to specifically discuss the building signage.
And I said that I could help at least facilitate that discussion.
Okay.
So I'm glad to hear that you're still waiting on a response. And I will, I will try to pop down there in the next day or two.
I appreciate it. I think even at our first session, you know, visibility is important to us.
Of course.
And we do feel that we wanna look at the rules and make sure that you realize that we are on an interesting corner with two frontages, or potentially three. But certainly the two that are important to us, so we can get our visibility out there.
Yeah, again, this is not something the planning commission handles, but I definitely can reach out to the building official who handles signage.
Thank you.
Yep, I believe Trucklight would be a great addition to the city of Southfield, and I wanna thank you for a good presentation, which answered all my questions. And one thing I really did appreciate also is a company overview. I'm sure before you started, no one here probably ever heard of Trucklight before, but the overview really helped us, give us a really detailed view of how your company really operates, and, you know, how strong it really is. So I do appreciate the company overview also. Can we have a...
You'd like me to read the recommendation?
Recommendation from the planner, please.
Planning department recommends favorable recommendation of the site plan review request of, for the construction of forty thousand gross square foot Trucklight headquarters and tech center on property located at two-one-seven-zero-zero Civic Center Drive, for the following conditions. Landscaping shall be installed in accordance with the attached tree preservation plan and landscape plan sheets L-one through L-three dated three-twenty-one-nineteen. The petitioners to provide a sprinkler system for all landscape areas to incurred preservation of plant materials. The petitioners to execute a perpetual maintenance agreement for the landscape and parking areas both on the site and in the right of way, which includes maintenance of the stormwater detention system. Petitioners to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. Approval of this site plan or building elevation represented herein does not constitute nor guarantee approval for signage. Separate approval and sign permits must be obtained from the building department for any proposed signs. Exterior lighting will be shielded to prevent spillage or glare on adjacent properties. Bike racks shall be installed in accordance with Article four, Section five-point-two-nine, subsection twelve. The site shall be designed and developed to contain public works of art in accordance with Section five-point-two-two-dash-five Public Art. Article four general requirements of the zoning ordinance unless exempted based on the written stipulations. Building elevation shown on sheet SP dash one-oh-two dated three-twenty-one-two-nineteen are incorporated with this approval. Site furniture for the proposed plaza on the corner of Civic Center Drive and Northwestern Highway Service Drive is to be the plainwell bench and plainwell litter receptacle and silver from landscape forms as approved by the Southfield City Center Advisory Board. The sign proposed for the plaza on the corner of Civic Center Drive and Northwestern Highway must be a minimum of fifteen feet from the property line if the ground sign will be over five feet in height. And these recommendations are made for the following reasons, as dated in our letter, March twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, can I have a motion, please?
Yes, to the chair.
Commissioner Mia?
I'd like to make a motion based on favorable recommendation from the planning commissioner that we accept PSP one-nine-dash-triple-zero-two.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion favorable, for favorable consideration for Commissioner Mia, and also seconded by Commissioner Martin.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it passes as stated. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Good luck. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of amendments.
To the chair.
Commissioner Cole Pepper?
Thank you. That's a move that we approve January the ninth, two thousand nineteen, study meeting, February the sixth, two thousand nineteen, special meeting conducted as a regular meeting, and also the minutes from February the twentieth, two thousand nineteen, special meeting.
Second.
Okay, the minutes have been approved by Commissioner Cole Pepper, and seconded by Commissioner Mia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes passed as stated. Next on the agenda, we have election of officers, which we still have Vice President, Vice Chair.
To the chair.
Commissioner Cole Pepper?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Mia as Vice Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Mia, anyone else? Okay, would you like to accept the nomination?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, let's have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Commissioner Mia, you are the new Vice Chair, starting immediately. So this is your new seat right here.
Come take your seat. Yes.
Yes, right now.
Right now.
Yeah, we gotta get you ready.
Right now, right now.
It's, it's congratulations and condolences.
Okay, do we have any miscellaneous?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Tonight, we have the recommendation of the capital improvement program. As you are aware, we had a study session with the key departments. They also came and presented to the council finance committee on March fifteenth. After tonight, hopefully with your favorable recommendation, it'll go to council study session on April eighth, and then finally to the council's April twenty-ninth regular meeting for adoption. All of you have a copy of the plan. It was either sent digitally or a hard copy, and a copy has been available for public review on our website, as well as at the front counter at the building department. I'm just going to give an overview of what the CIP is for, not get into the specifics of the plan, because we've already done that, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Again, capital improvement plan, or capital improvement program, is the schedule of public expenditures for a six-year period for inclusion in the annual budget. The first year is the actual budget that's adopted, and years two through six are best guest estimates or projections from the departments. So for example, the engineering department knows the funding and schedule for road improvements down the line. The fire department knows that they might be set with vehicles this year, but in the next few years, they might have to replace a ladder truck, or pump truck, or make major repairs to their fire stations. The CIP does not address all capital expenditures, but includes physical improvements that are permanent in nature and substantial equipment purchases needed for the city of Southfield to function successfully. A CIP is beneficial to the community because it allows for a systematic evaluation of all potential projects at the same time. It provides coordination between departments, and it presents a uniform, uniform plan for financing. It's also a requirement of the State Planning Enabling Act, which says that a planning commission, after adoption of a master plan, shall annually prepare a capital improvements program of public structures improvements. It's also required as part of our redevelopment ready certification. So we have to file quarterly reports with the state on where we are with our master plan, our zoning amendments, and the CIP. And I know the city treasurer is getting ready for bond rating, review, and they also are concerned about whether or not the city has a CIP program. Again, right from the State Enabling Act, the capital improvements program shall show those public structures and improvements in the general order of their priority within the ensuing six-year period. Each agency or department of local unit of government with authority for public structures or improvements shall, upon request, furnish the planning commission with lists, plans, and estimates of time of the cost of those public structures and improvements, and that is all detailed in the CIP plan. The last CIP was adopted in April of two thousand eighteen for fiscal years seventeen, eighteen through twenty-two, twenty-three. A full copy of that document can be found on the planning department's website, under resources. Our timeline was administrative work group met last November, planning commission held a study session in February, went to the finance committee of the council on March fifteenth. Tonight, it's not a public hearing, but we're here for public comment and a recommendation from the planning commission to the council. It'll go back to the full body of the council on April eighth, and then be before the council on their agenda for adoption at their April twenty-ninth meeting. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commissioner may have.
Commissioners? Commissioner Denson?
Thank you. Two questions to Terry. Did, I know that is not a public hearing, but did you put anything out for public comments?
Well, we've had the draft plan available at the building department counter for the last couple months. It's also been on our website, and we've had the finance committee and the study session were advertised as working sessions for the CIP.
And does, did anybody have comments?
We have not received any comments.
Okay. And also, just a little, little thing, on page eight, the S, V, S, Z, S, E, Z, I mean, the state evaluation.
State equalized value?
Yeah, that one. Thank you. The third paragraph.
Okay.
And, let me see, I just saw it. Okay. And it's just a typo, and I'll just share it later.
Okay.
But it's just, it's not the intent of the actual paragraph, but it's just a typo.
And what I've suggested, obviously, there's always going to be typos. Whether they're typos or fatal flaws, you can hand them in to us after the meeting, you can email us or call us. We certainly would like to get it corrected before it goes to the next phase.
Exactly.
And we are reliant on, for example, this was provided to us by the treasurer's office and the assessor's office. Each of the pages and the documents are provided to us at good faith by each department. So we take it on face value, whatever they submit to us is correct. But if you see something that doesn't look right, let Kyle, Jeff, or myself know, and we'll get it corrected.
Commissioner Cole Pepper?
To the chair, thank you. Let me say, Kyle, thank you. Got mine at home, all the color in it, and I know it's a lot of work, so great job. Just need to correct that typo on page eight, that typo, but overall, I wanna say thank you. I know there's a lot of work in it to get these out to the commission, so I wanna thank you. Another thing, I, this is the second time that we have had opportunity to have all the departments to come in to review their budget with us. And let me say, I was better impressed with this one than the, than the one we had last time. I think the departments were better prepared, they knew what we wanted, and they gave the timeline from the two, three to five years how their budget was to be spent. And I think it helped them, because now they have a better idea of how to utilize their budget. So Terry, again, let me say this to you, thank you for getting this together, because Commissioner Huntington will attest to, last director, we didn't do this.
No.
Okay, we won't call no names, but this is the second time in the thirty-eight years that we've been messing around, that we've had a director to get the planning commission actively involved and engaged in the process of making sure things were done right. So as I said previous years, thank you for your guidance, your vision, and your leadership, because this makes sure that we're on that right path. And I think they're better prepared. They know now, when they come in before us, they know they're gonna get grilled, and make sure they got their stuff right. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, and again, I think this is the fourth or fifth attempt that we've tried to do, but it's the second consecutive year.
Right.
And by requiring the departments to come and present, gives them more ownership over the process. Last year was kind of some growing pains. I think it will improve next year, working with the finance director, who has new software that will integrate the CIP with the actual budget, so that it will flag if there's inconsistencies between the annual budget and what the CIP is. So I think that will continue to improve the process and improve the participation from the departments as we move forward.
Thank you.
Okay, and I, when you're ready, I do have a resolution I'd like to read into.
Okay, I just wanna say, too, that I found it to be very interesting, the CIP meeting we had. It made you think about a lot of expenses that you really don't think about, especially within the fire department and police department. I was a little bit disappointed in the roads, proportion, commission, whatever, that seemed like we just throwing, doing the same things over and over, throwing good money into something that's not working, hasn't worked. And that was a little disappointing, I didn't hear any creativity or nothing unique or different, or, you know, any, anything creative coming out of there. But it was very interesting, and I think you did a good job in orchestrating and pulling out the most you could out of the different departments. Okay, I'll turn it back over to you, Terry. Oh, Commissioner Martin?
When we were going through the review with the individual departments, I think it was mentioned that a lot of the equipment, like the fire trucks and that, they get some trade-in value. I assume that that goes with the public works and other...
That's correct. And it actually goes through our purchasing department for any resale of product that still has some life span in it. But it's typically pennies on the dollar.
Yeah, and I assume that if they don't have any good resale value, they would look to the auction held by the city of police department.
I, the purchasing agent could tell you what the specifics are, but it is considered property of the city, and it does have value, and it has to be properly vetted and sold through the proper procedures. Some of it are kept as reserves, some of them are kept as parts, but those that don't have any value to us... as parts, but those that don't have any value to us will be put on the market for sale.
Okay. Anyone else?
Okay, Terry? Okay, this is a recommended resolution to recommend approval of the fiscal year 219, 220, fiscal year 2025, 2026, capital improvement plan, CIP, City of Southfield, Michigan. Whereas, one of the most important purposes of planning is to anticipate the needs of a community for future public facility improvements, and to provide a stable base from which to work in order to achieve these needs. This is a function of the capital improvement plan, which can help the City of Southfield to develop and implement a long-range policy for physical development. And whereas, capital improvements are those major non-recurring expenditures for physical facilities of government, or recurring expenditures for physical items which cost over $5,000, such as equipment and vehicles, or the installation of sewer and water mains. A CIP is a six-year evaluation and forecast of priorities, and provides an appropriate opportunity for review of a municipality's overall development for the near future. And whereas, the benefits of the CIP process relate to the fiscal stewardship and successfully implementing the Sustainable Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan adopted June 20th, 2016. Other benefits include implementing plans for new public works that are identified in the master plan, building new public facilities and locations identified in the master plan and consistent with public policy, weighing costs of projects against each other to determine the greatest value and the priority during any given year, dividing projects into parts or phases, example, land acquisition, design, development, and maintenance, identifying the total project costs of expensive facilities in enough time to secure adequate funding through grants, bonds, donations, and special assessments, spreading out capital debt over many years, helping make sure logical sequencing of events or pairing of projects takes place so that the water line is not replaced the year after the road is resurfaced, considering life expectancy of various municipal facilities and planning for replacement in future years, and establishing an effective local system for financial planning and management over a longer timeframe than that of any individual project. And whereas, six major advantages of a CIP are: coordinates community goals, needs, and capabilities; achieves optimum use of taxpayer dollars; encourages a more efficient governmental administration; maintains a sound and stable fiscal year; serves wider community interests; and number six, enhances opportunities for participation in federal and state grant-to-nade programs. Whereas, the CIP is authorized by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, MPEA, PA 33 of 2008, as amended, and is required by redevelopment-ready communities certification by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, or MEDC. And whereas, the Planning Commission held a review meeting with key departments at their special meeting held on February 20th, 2019, now therefore be resolved that the Southfield Planning Commission recommends approval of fiscal year 2019, 220 through fiscal 2025, 26, Capital Improvement Program, draft dated March 27, 2019, as amended.
Thank you.
To the Chair.
Commissioner Cole Pepper?
I recommend that we make favorable recommendations, favor approval on the CIP that's been presented tonight.
Second. Okay. Commissioner Cole Pepper made favorable approval, and Commissioner Martin seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, it passes as stated.
Chair?
Yes.
Do we require to sign this for one complete signed document?
We will, we will get your signature once we type this up.
Yeah, type it up.
And then we'll incorporate it into the final plan. So before the, Mr. Griffiths is the Secretary, before we adopt the final plan, we'll have his signature on behalf of the Commission.
Okay, thank you. Any other miscellaneous?
Just, I handed an updated...
Second one.
...Central Trails map. Mr. Huntington, you weren't there last time, but I was thinking of you in particular.
You see, I got it in my hand here.
And the previous copy was a draft. So how you quickly tell is, it should have a green band at the bottom of the cover. That's the updated corrected version. And second edition will be published at the end of the summer, once the trails have been completed. But this represents a major milestone in our continuing development of making the city center, in particular, and the City of Southfield, more pedestrian and bike-friendly.
Good job.
And earlier today, I presented to the Hospitality Committee of the Chamber of Commerce, representing all the hotels that are listed on that brochure, plus others. And they're also very excited about the progress that we've made with the bike share program, with the walkability, with placemaking, the public art, and the continued development of the trail system in the city. And I'm very proud of this milestone, and being able to produce a brochure that showcases all the good work and hard work that we've done over the last nine years. And I look forward to future publications and future editions that further highlight all the good work that we've done here in the city.
Thank you. Good job. This is great. I'm looking forward to trying it out. Anything else? Anyone else? Commissioner Mia?
I hope it's okay if I could say something. If you're watching, Commissioner Willis, we all miss you, and we wish you well. Get well soon.
Yep, thank you. All righty, media adjourn.